Ready Joe? Alright, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Mr. Placko, call the roll please.
Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Here.
Belinda Grassi.
Here.
Tom Heck.
Here.
Steve Jeffries.
Here.
Rise for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting and the public participation section on the agenda. First up, we've got the approval of the minutes from the November 20th Board Meeting. Motion to approve, I give a second please.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffries. Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Allison wasn't here.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Steve Jeffries.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye, motion carried. That leads us to special reports.
We have Melridge, we have Julie Weber, Principal at Melridge, we have a few students here also that are going to help her present all the good things that are happening over at Melridge. We're hoping we can get it done sooner than later because it's gonna be bedtime, she may have school tomorrow.
They all thought they were gonna subliminally, like say snuck in the middle of the morning.
They can just say it like, why don't you just say it out loud?
Why don't you get in?
We've got this cord everywhere.
Yeah.
So we do, we have here, with you.
Okay, so I have invited two 4th graders and two 5th graders to come with me tonight to talk about some of the things that we've been doing at Melridge this year. So our 4th graders, we have Mason Weber and Sawyer D'Amico, and then our 5th graders, we have Mo Dulce and Ella Fox. So they are going to chime in on a few things and let you know some of the things that we've been doing at Melridge. Okay, I wanna go back to the beginning. Alright, so we're gonna start here with our opening slide. I'd just like you to notice that the signs that we got on top of our doors coming into the building, and it says leaders are made here, and this is something that was purchased by our 5th graders last year. Our 5th grade always runs our school store, and the money raised from our school store, we were able to purchase these signs that, as you noticed, that coming into our building. So the 5th graders last year chose the words that we put on the sign. Some of the words are perseverance, teamwork, honesty, synergy, and so that's what the kids see every day when they walk into school. So leadership is a big idea that we're talking about at Melridge, and you'll see on all the little arrows on there, we're trying to get all the pieces and parts kind of working toward the same goal and in the same direction. So our staff is working on the curriculum and some of our curricular goals, along with the students, giving them leadership responsibilities within our school and within their classrooms, and then also branching out a little bit into the community, working with our parent groups. And then one of the arrows also says BLT, working with our building leadership team and some of the things we've been tackling this year and working on. So as we go through our little presentation tonight, we'll be hitting on each one of those things. Okay, this is the third year at Melridge that we have been using some of the ideas in the leader in me. So this year, we are working on some of these leadership skills within our classrooms, within the school community and beyond, and then amongst the staff. Within our classrooms, we have been really focusing on this idea of begin with the end in mind. And I like this quote here by Forrest Gump, kinda goes right along with what we've been doing. If you don't know where you are going, then you probably won't end up there. So our teachers have really been working with the kids in setting attainable goals for them, and it's not the same goal for every child, it's the same goal based on where that child is achieving right then, and then what they can do within the classroom to help further themselves. So we do this a lot, each of our teachers has been able to sit down and have one-on-one conferences with our, with the kids before we take the next administration of the MAP tests that are this week, and they have taken a look at where the kids were achieving in the fall, what they have learned through the first four months, almost four months of school, and how that has helped prepare them to take the test that they are about to take this week, and where the, where the kids' goals are for that test. So I've sat in on some of those conferences, and they're really good conversations that are happening between the teachers and the students, and how they are going to help themselves achieve those goals. Within the school community, we've, we've had a lot of opportunities for the kids to get involved with how our school runs on a daily basis. So the 5th graders are in charge of morning announcements, we have recycling teams, we have students mentoring other students, we have a group that loves to help the custodian, Mr. Watson, at lunch, and during their recess time, he gives them different responsibilities throughout the school. We're gonna talk a little bit about our school store and how our 5th graders are responsible for really every part of that school store and how it runs. Alright, every morning, we say the Melridge pledge to start our day off. So I would like our group of students right here, they're going to recite the Melridge pledge to you, and then tell you a little bit about what it means and why we say it every day. So, are you ready? Okay.
As a student at Melridge Elementary, I am proactive, which makes a difference in my life and the lives of others. I begin each task with the end in mind, as I learn to put first things first. I avoid confrontations by thinking win-win, and by seeking first to understand and to be understood. I create synergy with my class by working with others, and I take time to balance my life by sharpening my saw.
And all 330 kids at Melridge can probably say that by heart with them, even looking at it. So they are going to real quickly tell you why we say that every day at school. So Sawyer, would you like to go first?
Well, because it says first things first, like if you have a test, you should probably study for it instead of doing other things like playing outside. You should do your studying and then play.
Okay, alright, Mason?
Um, well, you have, you have your responsibility in class, at home, and at school. You have to do what you say in the Melridge pledge, you can't just say it in the morning and then go on with your day. You have to take those habits and put them in your everyday.
I'm always talking about working with others and synergizing with others, and talking and trying to understand what everyone's saying and listening to everyone's ideas every day.
Alright, so Ella and Mo are two 5th graders who work at the Melridge Market, so they're going to tell you a little bit how we got the Melridge Market up and running, and some of their responsibilities there.
Oh, yeah. To get the Melridge Market started, we passed around resumes, and you had to fill it out, and if you turned it in by a due date, it asks like all sorts of questions about like preparations or things that you have done that are kind of, that you have some experience doing, business stuff like that. And then we, everyone who turned it in by the due date, Mrs. Weber gave us an interview, and she asked us a lot of questions, and everyone that applied for the four jobs, which were, could sign up for the treasurer, manager, marketing, and the sales associate.
And then every day at IE time, the 5th graders would go to the library and synergize with each other and find out what I'm gonna sell at the Melridge Market, how we're gonna work at the Melridge Market, and what I'm gonna sell.
We started advertising and did some marketing, and like we have, we put together things that we've read over the morning announcements, and we also sent flyers home and put posters up around the school to help raise awareness of our school store, and we also set the pricing at our meetings for all the school supplies that we sell.
And what's next, the hottest seller is grippies. Yeah, we've sold, we've gone out of stock on the grippies.
We have to ask tomorrow. I think we sold over a hundred, so. Alright, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Obviously.
I wanted to say one thing that the, because the store is down by my classroom, and they adjusted and adapted because they had so many kids buying things that they needed a display board. And so they stand out there with the display board now, and they ask you what you wanna buy, so it's all ready, like at Chick-fil-A where you can order it. They're all ready. They are just, the difference between last year and today, they've got, they're doing right.
Right, and I will say that this group of kids definitely, we have a meeting probably every other meet where we sit down and we talk about what's going well and how we can improve it, and they are brutally honest about what is going well and what they think they can do to make it better. So they are working really well as a group on this project this year. Okay, Sawyer and Mason are going to talk a little bit about the book that all of our 4th graders read this year and our 5th graders got to read last year, and the fact that we took all 4th and 5th graders before Thanksgiving break to see the movie Wonder. So they're going to talk a little bit about what the message of that book was and how we kind of see it at working in our school.
Well, the theme of Wonder is mostly about friendship, and it's, the movie and the book are about bullying too, so if you put those together, you have to be nice to people so you can be friends. And it also represents our school because it shows kindness in the book, and you should always be kind to people, even if they don't look right, and you should always give them a chance.
Alright, and they've chosen a few quotes from the book that they wanna share with you and tell you a little bit about what it meant to them.
I chose don't judge a boy by his face because even if they look weird, you can't just start bullying them, you have to give them a chance, and then you might learn something.
I said, when given the choice between being right or being kind, I said about that. If you're being right, just don't wanna brag, you wanna make people feel good, and then if you're being kind, other people will be kind to you and you'll probably get along with them.
I also, it's not enough to be friendly, you have to be a friend. It's nice to sometimes like say hello to everyone and be nice to, to say, like be friendly, but it really, it makes someone say, when you take the time to decide if they really want a friend, to be a friend.
Yeah, I was gonna say, why be a bully? It doesn't really affect your life, it's just being mean, like it just, I don't understand what it does to you. It leaves the person that you're bullying feeling sad and disappointed about themselves, and they don't feel right about themselves if you're being bullied.
That is so true.
Alright, we also have continued our leader of the month this year, and Brueker's Bagels once again sponsors our breakfast that we have the first Friday of every month, and each teacher recognizes a student in their class who has showed some of these leadership traits within the classroom, and also has seen or heard things of them doing these types of things around the school as well. So we recognize them during our leadership breakfast. Now moving on a little bit to staff leadership, we, at the beginning of the year in our first BLT, we made a statement together, and that's at the top, we will work collaboratively to improve our school, build climate, communicate effectively, and adapt to the needs of our community. So those are the types of things that we're keeping in mind with all the decisions that we come up with during our BLT and all the things we talk about, we try to keep those, those ideals in our mind.
BLT is building a lot.
Yes, building leadership team. And there's one representative from each grade level on the building leadership team along with a person from our special ed staff. So those topics right there are some things that have come up in our first two meetings this year. You see a lot about kindness in there, goal setting, and we're doing that through our goal setting within our classroom with our MAP testing, positive behaviors that kind of goes right in with our student, our leader of the month. We have talked a lot about student growth and what we are doing within our classrooms to help our students grow, and we've even tackled a little bit the beginnings of grading and kind of what some of our ideals are as educators on grading and what the purpose of grading is. So we've started those conversations within our BLT and are beginning to kind of take them out to our staff meetings. We have also, although the last three years we've been focusing a lot on the leader in me, it's those ideas within that book. Last year, it kind of became a district initiative to start reading and talking about Urban Meyer's book Above the Line, and these two books really connect very well together. Yes, the language might be slightly different, but the ideals in each of the books is, just kind of meshes right in with one another. So during our BLTs, we have been talking about how we can take the ideas of Above the Line and how that language fits right in with what we're already doing. And then I wanted to include this quote because it fits in with all of the leadership things that we've been talking about and some of the things that the kids shared tonight as well, to do the right thing even when nobody is looking. Just a few other things to kind of wrap it up, some of the things that we've done this fall. We did have a shared reading experience again, and we chose Charlotte's Web this year. So that is our big book reveal right there. A lot of the classrooms became very involved in Charlotte's Web this year, doing different kinds of projects on their days when they did not have a special during their scheduled encore time. So they did a lot of different projects within their classrooms, and we even had a website this year where all the teachers read a chapter of the book, and I heard a lot of kids say, oh, Mrs. Kiefer read to me last night, or I know that Mason would always say, who's gonna read to me tonight? So it was kind of a great thing to get our teachers into our kids' homes at night too, reading them the story. And then to wrap that all up, we had a Melridge Country Fair, and our PTO was really involved in this and really supported us in what we wanted to do here, and it was just about 25 minutes, the kids came down to the gym, we had different games set up, you can see on the bottom there, they had to work together to make a spider web, and we just had different things that, that they could kind of celebrate the end of their, reading their book. We started out our school year again focusing on how each child is unique and an individual, but how together we can create something wonderful. So each child painted a rock, and I kind of, myself along with some PTO members, collected rocks all summer long throughout Lake County, and washed them up and brought them in, and everyone got to paint a rock, and if you're ever over at Melridge, they're located toward the back of the building around our little library. We have all 330 rocks out there to take a look at. We also collected sacks this year again, this is about the third year that we've done this drive for the Subzero Mission, and we were able to collect over 300 pairs of sacks and donated to them in which they put it in, they give it to the homeless in our area. And we also again had a Veterans Day assembly at Melridge, which was very well received by all the veterans that got to come and attend that day. And we did our coin war again this year. Last year, we donated to the David Baker Scholarship Fund, and this year, we donated to Riverside High School in support of the veterans memorial that they are creating up here. So our money went to that this year. And then in, through the end of November and December, we are again collecting hats and mittens that will be donated to the Hope Chest. So we've done a lot of different things to kind of reach out into the community and try to teach our kids that there's ways that they can help within our community. And of course, I had to end with this, it's a marathon, not a sprint. So there's lots of things that go into everything that we do every day, and kind of just what we do, we want to make sure that our kids can build upon the learning that takes place. Alright, that's all I have. Anyone have any questions for any of them?
Yep, Sawyer, would you like to come to my house and talk to my high school students about doing first things first, doing their homework before they like do fun stuff? That'd be really cool.
We talk a lot about procrastination at my house too.
And I just wanted to say that I think what you guys are doing with the store and all the things that you're learning is really, really important stuff, it sounds like my day at work every day, so you guys are learning some really important things. So that's really cool.
What's a gripper?
The thing you sold out of.
Grippy?
Grippy, I'm sorry, a grippy.
What is it?
It's like something that you put out the front of your pencil, like it's like a comfortable grip that you put on your pencil.
Terrific. Mo told me today that he doesn't particularly like the grippies, but they are hot sellers.
Mo needs to learn that flushing ice cubes down the toilet won't get a snowblow. Good job, guys.
That takes us to old business. Do we want to schedule the organizational meeting now in old business, or are you gonna do that with your?
We can do it right now, we'll have to approve it later, it's in the consent agenda, but I was, I mentioned last meeting Tuesday, January 9th as a date, possible date, you know, we can do it that day or any other day if you guys decide.
Belinda, did I hear that you cannot do Tuesdays?
No, that, actually that's fine.
That was fine.
It's my birthday.
Well, that's extra special then.
I can do my, I can, you have on my birthday.
We'll bring you a cake.
Thank you, I'll hold you to that.
Okay, Steve, January 9th okay for you?
I can do Mondays and Thursdays.
Of that week?
Yes.
I'm good, I mean, I can't wait until school until the week after.
Okay.
We'll be out of town, Columbus.
So what day are you looking at?
I can, I can do Monday.
We have to get it in that week, correct?
Monday or Thursday, will that work for all?
So it's the 8th and the 11th?
The 8th or the 11th.
The 8th is better for me, but I can make the 11th work if we have to.
Okay, I'm good on both days as well.
Jack?
I'm good on both.
Belinda?
Okay.
Carrie?
Okay.
Jim? Alright, so let's go with Monday to 8th then for the organizational meeting, is it 6:45 that we do? Is that something real like that?
Yeah, we do 6:45, the quick budget hearing at 7 o'clock is the organizational meeting.
Anybody have anything else for old business? Alright, moving on to new business. That was easy, alright, let's go to Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports. Superintendent's Business Advisory.
Next meeting will be in February.
Okay, evening up, February 2018, next meeting.
We have time in between, we're gonna have the student shadow, some people out in the district.
Okay, awesome. Alright, go through on Programming and Boosters, Mr. Miley.
Well, it'll be simple, we haven't had a meeting, we have a curriculum scheduled for Thursday morning, and no booster yet.
Okay.
There will be a meeting with the Athletic Boosters, any representatives from the Athletic Boosters to talk to myself and, talk to me and Mr. Liatsos about some of the qualities that we'd like to see in our next athletic director. It'll take place hopefully tomorrow if there's enough stuff.
Excellent. Alright, Finance and Audit and Legislative, Mrs. Grassi.
We haven't had a Finance and Audit meeting since last month, we'll need to leave the budget and approve that at the board meeting in October, so we don't have one on the agenda probably until after the first year. And I don't have anything to report for Legislative right now.
Buildings and Grounds and Strategic Plan, Mr. Heck.
Sure, so we had a Buildings and Grounds meeting yesterday, basically just wanted to get an update on how we are faring now that it's winter is in full swing, and happy to see that things are looking good, all the buildings, warm, safe and dry.
They're good.
All good things, and you know, there are some additions as well, the maintenance staff went ahead and installed eight cameras around the campus, which I think will be very, a very good enhancement to the security and just the general situational awareness for the staff and everyone else, so they're literally everywhere, on the fieldhouse and in the field itself, in the parking lot, even on some of the dugouts.
Great.
In the back. And we're also doing some, some work with the fieldhouse, I have a number of people have actually come and talked to me about their appreciation to have the fieldhouse open to the public in the morning, so I think people are taking advantage of that, which is a very good thing. And there's one other thing I wanted to bring up, and it's the Performance Center. Many of you may recall that we did a lot of work with the John R Gym, creating the workout facility, you know, really par excellence, and so now we actually have put it to the test for almost a whole semester, and the feedback is it's very positive and it worked out very well. So I think it was a very good investment in enhancing the experience of our students.
Excuse me, Mr. Heck?
Sure.
Mr. Care, that facility over there, who, is that open to the public as well?
Yeah, no, the fieldhouse is, we have the fieldhouse in the morning, but at this point, we do not have that area open yet for the public.
And what are the hours for the fieldhouse? Is that still on the website?
It's still on the website, I believe it's 7:00 AM till 11:00 AM, Monday through Friday, excluding holidays.
Yeah, I'm certain that's the, those are the hours, 7:00 to 11:00.
We've been over there, there's some work being done on the mezzanine area, the paint and screwing it up, all the weight, old obsolete weight equipment has been removed, and almost looks like a new area, and we're gonna put a softball batting cage up there that will hang from the ceiling. So we'll still have the ability to put other things there, but since the softball team used John R W Gym, we displaced them, so it'll be over at the fieldhouse now with a batting cage.
Good. Okay, anything else?
That is it, thank you very much.
Alright, Mr. Jeffries, Personnel and Alumni?
Well, this should be easy, Personnel Committee, there's nothing new to report there, we have not had a meeting. There was alumni meeting yesterday, they were discussing the website and membership. We encourage you to go to their website, any website alumni, and possibly join, all their information is available on the website there. And that's all I have.
I have one, it's kind of segueing into the alumni areas, we had a great Veterans Day celebration throughout our district on Veterans Day, and many of our own students that graduated from our school district have come back serving our nation very proudly, and I can't say enough about their service to the, to the country, and it was a nice organizational celebration really in the auditorium, and Melissa wanted to say a few things as well.
I just, it's one of the proudest things that I think we do as a district that I feel very strongly about, and Jenny Cavell runs it up here at the high school and has grown the program over the last three or four years, and I know, Mr. Heck, you come every year, but we do it in every single building, everybody does something to different degrees honoring our veterans. I had the pleasure of doing it at Hale Road and leading things this year, they had kind of already set it up, but they, up here at the campus, we get to bring our family members, so my dad comes and he spends the morning, and Mr. Swiss Lockey at LaMuth still invited my dad even though he, we don't have any kids there anymore, so it is really a day that I am very proud So, it is really a day that I am very proud of what we do here as a community across the board in honoring those that have served. So, I just felt like it needed to be mentioned, and, you know, Mr. Kales and I had talked about it. It really is something that makes both of us just very proud to be a part of Riverside for that.
It truly is terrific events. I just, I can't say enough either about how well organized and how engaging they are for the veterans to be there. And this year, I was happy enough to be accompanied by my daughter, and that was really terrific. So, it was just really a terrific, terrific day. Thank you.
Good. Alright, that takes us into Superintendent's Report.
Just a few items. Number one, I wanted to get an update, give an update to the Board about our cell tower. You know, it was supposed to... They were supposed to break ground last March. Now, I'm being told that they're gonna break ground, I believe, this March, this coming March. I did call Ron Gane, who's the Council for the American Tower Company, for an update. He basically said that they just are submitting a permit that shouldn't take more than 30 days to receive that. Everything else has been taken care of. There was some area that they looked at putting the tower that was close to the Pioneer area of the county, of the Historical Society, but there were some wetlands over in that area, so we had to move it a little bit further in this direction. It's gonna be close to the first baseline of the softball field all the way in the back. And it's not gonna be too far off from the railroad tracks. But, to coordinate the cell tower last year, the easement that was required of us to put the new railroad tracks in for the installation of the trestle and dropping the dirt from the field took a lot of... A lot of organization. So, we're getting there, and he promises me that they'll be breaking the ground in March. As soon as they do is when they start paying us for the property as well.
The easement that they will be using, is that gonna be the same easement that railroad is gonna use as well?
It's gonna be close. What happens is the railroad took about 15 feet or so from their property line, and it'll be back there, but I don't believe it's... They're not overlying each other, are they? In fact, what's interesting about this whole easement issue is easement will run, and it runs all the way across the property line. But, this whole time that we were parking buses in the salt-in area, salt parking lot, we've been on their property. So, we have to have a small agreement. They don't care, they're gonna allow us to park there, but it knows that the bus or the end of the bus was on their property. So, we're gonna have to break something up real quickly that allows us to park on that property as well. They've been really good, too. We were to give up that area for about two years, but it's very difficult to find places to park buses. And, we've been working around, they've been working around us, and we've been parking some buses on the other side of that lot. Technically speaking, we weren't supposed to be over there for about a two-year period. It's working out. Very accommodating, and they're getting a lot done over there, too. A couple of other things, we spoke to a representative from Little Mountain Homes, and Mr. Sterns will be out of his house. He's out of his house now, but he'll be not... He won't be going back to his house after the summer 17th. He'll be out for good. At which point, Little Mountain Homes will be taking down the structures on the property sometime, I believe, in January.
Yeah. Gary? It'll be January.
Sometime in January. Couple other things, too. We've explored ways to try to improve our dismissal times, especially at Lamont. And, what we've noticed is if we get out of the Riverside campus five minutes earlier, we've seemed to have less problems over at Lamont. We have a few buses that roll in a little bit late over there, not all of them, but just a few. And even today, we released the students. We dismissed them here about 10 minutes early because of the weather. Weather's only gonna make things more difficult for us. So, in talking to Mr. Liatsos, the principal at the high school, he can get another five minutes or give another five minutes to us for dismissal time. So, we can allow our students at the Riverside campus to dismiss five minutes early, and he's taking it from some announcement time that he has built into the schedule, so a couple of passing times. It's not gonna really impact the day. So, I did put it in the Friday packet to the Board, and I'd like to start that with the semester, starting with the semester. We'll send a notice out to the parents just to give them a heads up that we'll be releasing the kids five minutes early every day. And, the only other thing I have, other than the presentation that we have today, is I've been working real hard trying to organize a policy workshop with the Board, and I've talked to two Miola reps. Neither one of them can make it on the days that I've suggested. Mr. McIntyre can. And today, I again asked Miola that if they can't, the two representatives can't come, that they provide me with another, and they said they can. I'm assuming it's with the two days that I gave them. And one is the 28th of December, and one is the 30th. I believe the 28th is a Thursday. That would be an evening meeting. Or, we can do it on the 30th, which is a Saturday. We're gonna have a work session on the 30th where we cover policy, and also Dan McIntyre can make a... You know, every year, we do a boardsmanship type of workshop with Dan McIntyre. Dan can make both these dates, so we can at least do the boardsmanship, and I can piggyback the policy workshop, too, if you wanna put them both on the same day.
It'd be easier if we could get it both done at the same time.
My strong note is for the 28th.
I would prefer the 28th.
December, you're talking?
Yeah.
Yes.
I can't do any of those days. I'm out of town.
Do you want to consider maybe on Monday, the 8th, we do our organizational meeting? Maybe do a work session afterwards for the policies? We could maybe try to do something to that and see if they're available.
If that thing's so far out, then, you know, Dan will probably be available, too.
That's a good idea.
Because usually, the organizational meeting's fairly quick, so we could do it right after that.
What... You're starting the organizational meeting at 6:45?
Yeah, the organizational meeting starts at 7:00. We'll be done at probably 7:30 at the latest.
Is that early enough for the Board?
That's great. Yep.
I will check Monday, the 8th.
Thank you.
We have representatives from Fannie and Howie. They're gonna give us a digital tour, not yet though, fellas, a digital tour of our buildings. I figured that maybe Gary might wanna do a couple of his items, then we'll turn the floor over to our architects.
I only have one item for the treasures update, and just wanted to point out on tonight's agenda, we have an item to approve for granting another easement to Lake County Department of Utilities for to install a sewer for the Heather Stone Development. This was in the Friday packet back in November, and I just wanted to pass out a quick map just so you understand where that easement's at, in case you had not reviewed that previously. And, so, they're looking to install sewer for the Heather Stone Development to increase their capacity over there. It's a 30-foot easement right, you know, along that development, there's a line of trees. They're kind of a little bit farther in from that. The way they install it, they somehow snake it underground so they don't have to disturb the entire surface all the way across the property, so they won't have to disturb like the baseball fields that'd be going underneath one of the baseball fields there.
So, they need to put this pipe there? Did we have any dialogue with them regarding this type of project for maybe over in Concord so that we could possibly get sewer over there?
We did bring it up, and the guy who was just the real estate person, you know, he pretty much said the same thing that we've heard from Department of Utilities over and over again, that there's no capacity over on Concord handling that major infrastructure improvement and put it in a lift station. So, he kinda echoed the similar comments previously.
He was brief before he engaged with you, it sounds like.
So, which one of these lines is our border?
Did you see... It's kinda hard to see this black line here. Right along here, you see this tree line is our trees.
Our trees are here. Okay. So, they wanna do this in here?
Right. They're gonna be a little bit in on our property from there.
So, if we do this, and we ever wanted to do anything back here, we will not be able to use that area, correct?
We wouldn't be able to put like a building over that, but due to how close it is to the property line, we wouldn't be building anything that close anyways. We are able to do driveways over top of it. If we had like a driveway or a parking lot, that was part of one of the conditions that they added on to their documentation. Yeah, the schools allow to place driveways, roadways, parking areas over the easement area after making a request with the Department, and they'll grant permission for that. We asked them to verify if we'll have sewer if we build the 6 through 12 campus here, and they put on here that there probably would be, but wouldn't give us a definite answer whether we build a tie-in sewer or if we build a new campus here.
So, question, between this line, this is the easement, right?
Right.
So, the distance between there and there is how far?
Um...
Because you're basically giving up that land also.
Right. It's around, I believe it's around 70 feet or something like that.
Plus the easement of 30?
Plus the easement of 30.
So, 100 feet off our border.
Mr. Kales and I did sit down with him and kinda went through the plans in detail, look at the maps, and we don't think it'll interfere with any of our future plans for the campus, and they offered to pay us $43,000 for that easement. And then, once they're done with their putting the pipe in, we can pretty much use the land just like, you know, we have previously. The only issue would be if we were to build that close to the property line at some point in the future, we might run into some trouble with that.
Which is my next question. If we were building back there, what is the township's requirement for off the... our border as it is?
Yeah, I haven't confirmed that, but it might be the same as Concord, the 50 feet on that positive. That's what I would assume, but that seems to be pretty standard.
So, in essence, we would be giving them another 50.
Right.
But, we could put a drive over it if we had to.
Right. I guess I would be inclined to approve, but I guess as a caveat, I would like a definitive answer on whether or not, if we built here, whether or not we would be able to tap in. I think that's important information to have.
Right.
So, I guess I would modify the... When we get to this, I would modify it to include verbiage along the lines of pending, understanding whether or not we would be able to tap in if we built a K through 12 campus. Right now, it's K, 6 through 12.
We're already here, sewer.
That's out front. We do, it's out front, but the question is, we would be bringing more students here, we need more capacity. Are we... I just wouldn't...
Plus our line would come to us.
Right. So, I guess I would like to get more definitive understanding of how we'd be able to tap into the sewers if indeed we built a 6 through 12.
Do you want to table this, or do you wanna vote on this now?
Well, we haven't got to the agenda yet, but...
I would assume that we can, and the reason for that is when we were talking about possibly building an elementary school over here, they said we could. Now, that would be with a high school already on the camp, you know, on this campus of 1,700 kids and an additional elementary school of 500 or so. So, you're not only putting in 6th and 7th grade on this, but you'd be putting in K through... I know 6th and 7th is the whole district, but you look at the numbers, it'd probably be very close to being the same, but I don't have a definitive answer.
Right. I guess, you know, I don't wanna tie the hands of a future Board and have an issue, a capacity issue. Obviously, that has been a major concern for many of the Board members, so...
Yeah, the way they have it worded on here, it says, I'll just read it here, it says, "Capacity for sanitary sewer for future development is probably available off of Riverside Drive for Riverside local schools, but need to know more details on future plans to confirm."
Alright, so probably it's about the difference they can give us because we don't have the numbers.
Right. They're not gonna...
Alright, that's fair. So, I think that answers my question.
Yeah, I think getting them to confirm that now would probably be...
It'd be difficult because we don't have any specific plan that we're presenting.
Right.
Okay, fair enough.
Anything else?
Go ahead.
Okay.
So, now we have Mike Myers, Steve Blazinski, and Andy Zatila here to give us a virtual tour of what we've designed so far for our new elementary school.
Good evening, everyone.
Good to see you again.
Yeah.
It's been a long time.
Last year at this time, we were here talking about ramping up on design. So, now, tonight, we're gonna talk kind of about winding down. We're kinda getting to the table end. Michael's going to talk about, you know, where we are in the process, where we've been as far as all the meetings that we've had and who we've talked to during the process. And then, the exciting thing, he's gonna show you a virtual tour and use our computer design tools and be able to take you on a virtual tour throughout one of the elementary schools.
Very cool.
So, I think it'll be a really nice thing and something that people can really get a good feel for what it's like inside the building.
Nice.
And, Michael, whenever you are ready.
Alright. Steve? As Steve was saying, you know, we'll do a quick walkthrough of the building here in a three-dimensional environment, but before I start that, just a quick update on where we are in the process overall. We are expecting within the next week to finish what we consider the design phase. Construction documents will be coming to an end. Over the last month or so, as we've been doing our construction documents, we've held several staff meetings to do a final review of technology systems. We've also had meetings with district staff to go through and discuss door hardware and security issues. We had a meeting last week to go through and discuss exterior colors for the building, and we selected some colors for the building. What you see on the screen is not a representation of the building colors, so this is just a model that is intended to show you the form and the scale of the building, but not the finishes or the color selections of the building. In addition to the staff meetings, we've also been reviewing the interior color selections of the building. We've had internal design meetings to go through, do quality review of our documents to make sure we had all our details correct and all the different items picked up. And then, we've also had some outside agency review meetings, and I think you're all aware of the situation with Concord and zoning, but I would like to update you with Madison Township, or, sorry, Madison and Painesville Township. We did meet with Rich Constantine, the zoning inspector over there. Had about a two-hour meeting with him. We had a really good meeting going through our upcoming zoning submission for documents there. He was very pleased with the quality of the documents and our communication, so I think we're gonna have a good process there with Painesville Township in going through the zoning process. There will be a request for some variances related to some site signage. And, Rich has also indicated that even though our current design, our signs are a little bit bigger than what the township allows, he felt that what we were intending to do on a school site with larger signs that had very clear directions, this is parent drop-off, this is student drop-off and directionality across the site, that that was really what should be present for a school environment. So, he's very supportive of having those signs, but it's just a technicality that we have to ask for a variance and get those. So, once we go through and finish our process, we will be making our submissions then to the Building Department to start our building permit review process. For the full building permit, I think the Board is where we do have a foundation permit already for both projects that grandfathered us in under the old building code. So, now, we'll be seeking the full building permit. We'll also be doing other agency reviews, soil and water, fire department, utility reviews and things like that. So, that'll all be happening over the next month. And then, Icon Construction, I think, is intending to release the projects or start their bidding process in early January through February. With that being said, I'll try and take you on a quick walkthrough here of the building. Again, as I said, this is form and dimensional capacity of the building, and it's a really good 3D walkthrough, but it's not colors and finishes. And, I will tell you, this is a working model, so you're gonna see some things floating around and out there that, you know, you might question what they are. So, it's not a perfect model. So, I'll try and walk you through this, and I apologize if I'm gonna kneel down here because I gotta kinda drive as we go through this. And if I start going too fast and somebody gets busy, let me know.
Mike, do you want to cheer?
I don't take that one. I'll stand in the back. I can go inside.
I know. Well, you were gonna have to eventually. Thanks. So, first thing I'll do is just take a spin around the outside of the building. This is... This particular layout of the building is the representation of the building design for Concord. It is the same building design for Madison, but Madison is mere image. It is the same building design for Madison, but Madison is mere image, from what you will see here. We have the main gymnasium area here, to the left-hand side of the screen, music room, and this is our main entry. And I'll zoom in a little bit here. So, we come into our main entry canopy, the doorways are recessed, we have building lettering here, and building naming is something that will still need to be determined by the districts, so the lettering you see is just a placeholder at this point. We're going to have an illuminated logo, school logo here, this will be an acrylic logo, that'll be LED backlighting, so it'll be a nice illuminated item at night for visitors coming into the building. As we pan to the right, the second story that you see here is the media center and innovation lab area. First floor down here is the administration. Further to the right is our academic wings, so this is our classrooms, two-story element. I'm going to go a little fast here, so, again...
When you do the bird's eye view, you're going to show the orientation as it is by, with the street, right?
Uh, I can do that, yes, and for Concord, actually, what you're seeing right now is probably pretty much the orientation that you'll see from Concord-Hamden Road, is it has this orientation relative to the road. For Madison Avenue, it'll be very similar to what you saw when we started looking directly at the front of the building. Again, these are academic areas here and here, two-story academic areas, nice corner windows in the extended learning areas. I come around to the back of the building, whoops, sorry. Again, academic areas, we have a canopy, exit doorway here as well. Now, for Concord, these doors not only serve as an exit, but they also will serve as an entry, because at Concord, if you recall, we have a parking lot, not only on the front side of the building, but a parking lot on the north side of the building, that will be used for parent drop-off, but also for events and overflow parking. Come around to the back of the building, and again, this area actually in the center here, although we're not showing it, is the playground area itself, and we're not showing all the equipment and things in this particular model, but that is the central area where the playground will be. Again, we have academic classrooms here, this is a mechanical room for air handlers, this area here is the staff dining commons, and then, the second floor here is windows into the media center. This is the doorway that would be the event entry for Concord at the back of the building, and it aligns directly with the front main entry. And then, again, to the right-hand side...
So, at Concord, that door would be close, like wrapping around to the parking lot there?
Yes, there will be a walk path that'll go from the parking lot right to that door, but also, that walk path will take you directly to the dining commons door, which is right here on the right-hand side back, and you can choose whether to let them come in the double door here, or right directly into the dining commons area.
Yep, that's nice.
So, this is the stage area here, and then, to the right-hand side, again, we have mostly kitchen and maintenance areas, mechanical areas. I'll try and elevate us here a little bit.
So, deliveries as well, correct?
Deliveries as well will be coming into this back area, this is our, primarily our service area of the building. There's a set of doors here that are outdoor storage area for lawn mowing equipment and snowplows, variety of things. This is our main entry, uh, sorry, delivery entry door that'll lead to a learning-receiving custodial room, and then, the doors down here on the end are for mechanical and electrical equipment access. And then, as we come around, you see our...
If I could, since we have the aerial view and we can see the roofs, when we have talked previously, you know, flat roofs are definitely not in at this point, and from this vantage point, it looks like they are fairly flat. Can you talk a little bit about how much drop there's going to be from the center to the edges and things like that?
Yeah, absolutely. Flat roofs are a generic term, and, you know, back in the days when this building was built particularly, they were truly flat roofs. Nowadays, we are actually required by code, the roof has to have a minimum of a quarter inch per foot slope on that roof, and while it's not really very well visually seen here, there is typically anywhere from eight to twelve or sixteen inches of slope across some of these spans of these roofs that go to interior drainage points. And we're actually required to have positive drainage on the roof, and there are limitations by code that, they'll say, we can't have ponding that occurs on the roof in large areas, so, and that is something that's all visually inspected during construction as well, to make sure that we have the positive slope and adequate drainage on there.
Yep, I mean, just to, just for everybody else's background, we've had issues with our, some of our existing buildings, because they truly are flat roofs, and that situation will be avoided in the new construction.
Yes. So, again, we're back to the gymnasium, this is the mechanical yard, there is actually fencing around that, and six-foot tall evergreen trees that are planted all around that that help conceal that. We're just not showing that landscaping. So, now, I'll try and quickly take you into the building itself here. So, as we come down into the main entry, again, we have, this is the reception area, so that the office staff have a very clear line of sight of anybody coming in or up to the sentry doorway. Any visitor into the building will be required to use the buzz-in intercom system before they even gain access to the vestibule to get into the building, they have to be buzzed in. Once they're inside of these doors, these interior doors will remain locked down, and they have to go through the door, whoops, sorry, they have to go through this door to the right here that leads into the office and into the reception area. Once you're in here, this is our main receptionist, there will be monitors on the wall that have general announcements, but also monitors that show the security cameras that are placed all throughout the building, and then, the fact that you're being watched the moment you basically arrived at the building. Uh, I will kind of quickly, because I know this could take some time, but I'll go back out into the main corridor here. So, once we get into this main corridor, to the right, we have our academic areas, and to the left, behind those doors, we actually have our polyurethyl community areas, the gymnasium, the dining commons portion of the building. So, as we go to the right, you'll see some bulkheads here, there's restrooms back here for public use and student use. We also have added this security grill that you see here, so that in after-hours use, if the district wanted to have the community using the dining commons or gym, they could secure the academic area of the building, so that people weren't roaming throughout any other portion of the building. The stairs lead up to the second floor, and I'll come back through there. So, real quickly, I'll kind of run down the corridor here. The doors you see here would normally be open, those are security doors, and in the model, they're shown closed, but in a lockdown situation, those doors would automatically close and lock, preventing people coming into this section of the building, and there are a series of those compartmental doors throughout the building. To the right, we have special education classrooms. And I'll just real quickly take a peek in there, shows some of the casework layouts. Now, the furnishings, we haven't fully designed yet, but it shows a general layout of the classroom, the sinks, and the cubbies that are in this space. I'll go back out here, I'll walk down the corridor. To the right-hand side, you will see we have student restrooms with the wash fountains out in the corridor, so students can be observed. To the left, we have a mechanical room, but we've added glass to the door, so the students can actually see what's going on inside the building. What is the heart of the building? What are those mechanical systems, the ductwork, the piping, everything doing in there? Whoops, I'm running out of power. Steve, can you grab my cord here?
Five minutes of pressure.
No running in the halls either.
Yeah. Uh, the graphics you see on the sidewalls, those are acoustic wall treatment that the students, they add color to the building, but they'll also give the students places to hang posters and displays. Stairs that go upstairs. Now, I'm entering into one of our classroom learning areas. This has, thank you, Sher, I appreciate that. There we go. So, this is, there are four classrooms in each learning community, and they have an extended learning area, so we have an open learning area here, open ceilings, casual, comfortable seating. What you're seeing here are computer charging carts where they would live at night when they're plugged in. And then, every classroom has lots of open windows for connectivity between the educational spaces, so the students and the teachers can see what's going on throughout these areas. This is a small group learning room for small projects or tutoring, and another typical Each classroom has the cubbies within the room, except for the fifth grade.
How many cubbies approximately?
Um, it's approximately, I want to say it's about twenty-six. We designed for twenty-five, and we usually throw in one or two extra, just in case, you know, for a little overflow of things. I'll double-check and make sure.
And each classroom has windows?
Each classroom has windows to the outside. Uh, I think every classroom has about two windows, the kindergarten, I believe, has three windows to the outside.
Kindergarten classrooms are larger than regular classrooms. They're about a thousand square feet?
They're a little over a thousand square feet, closer to about eleven-hundred square feet, so...
Is that because they use the floor more and things like that?
Yeah.
A bathroom in there, too.
That's nice.
So, that, if I went through those doors, that would be another learning community. We have doors that lead to the outside there, I can walk up the stairs. We have a nice curve feature to the stair accent wall. Again, the upstairs has the very same configuration as the downstairs, as far as how the rooms are laid out. So, I'll continue down this second corridor here. We have staff workrooms on each floor. That sink hopefully will not be floating above the cabinetry there. Again, we have the student group restrooms, and again, we have a window for them to look down into the mechanical space and all the ductwork and things that are occurring. Now, here on the second floor, if I turn and go this way, we go down to, this is the main computer room, so glass at the door, so the kids can see all the computers and the wiring, and the red, blue, green blinking lights that'll be going on in there. And then, here, we're into the fifth grade extended learning area, very similar to the other learning communities, little different configuration. Classrooms, again, lots of openness and visual connectivity to all of the spaces. And then, as we go out of the fifth grade, I'll go back down to...
Do all the classrooms have a sink?
Uh, all of the classrooms have a sink in them, yes, that is correct.
Yeah, but freaking button...
And a bubbler, yes.
Nice.
And then, here on the second floor, we have one special education room, typical, very typical classroom environment. And then, we also have an art room on the second floor, which has exposed ceiling, lots of open space, storage, and very large, nice sinks for all kinds of project activities, windows so students can see into the art room space as they walk by here. The mirrored doorway here is actually an elevator, and then, we're at the main landing of the second floor. Again, students can see out to the playground area, they can see downstairs. We have a glass garage door, and this is the innovation lab or maker space for a variety of different projects or things that could occur in here. There's going to be a green wall for television broadcast, same large sinks and so. And then, another glass garage door that provides connectivity, so that this could be opened up with the media center as well. And in the media center, again, very flexible space, a lot of casual seating, we have two teaching areas, there's one right here for students and instructors, and then, one in the back of the room. Very open, creative ceiling, and lots of windows looking out into the building. Some high windows for daylighting into the space as well. I'll go back downstairs here. Now, we head over to the, what I call generally the public portion of the building, but we go through the security doors, now we have music room. Again, hopefully, those chairs won't be floating. So, music room, music storage in here for students, risers, we have public restrooms, again, over here on the right-hand side. I really don't know what that is there. I'll have to find out where that came from. Concession area, so we have a concession window, and just a small concession area with a refrigerator, a sink, shelf space for, you know, a hot dog maker, popcorn machine or things in here, and counter for transaction surface.
So, that would have, that room would have, like, two-twenty power there, and that kind of thing?
It does not have two-twenty, it has one-twenty on the power. We didn't set it up for any commercial-grade equipment, more just your plug-in residential type of equipment.
And how hard would it be to add if needed?
Uh, would not be that hard. I mean, if that's something we want to add, we can certainly take care of that right now. It'd be harder later.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, it would be harder later, so it's something that we'd want to do now, if that is something the district wishes to have in there. This is our dining commons. And again, the tables are really just a placeholder right now, we haven't decided on the style of tables. You see our stage and our proscenium with a projection screen, doors that go out to the playground, and then, there are television monitors that will allow for broadcast in here, general announcements, or TV, or event broadcast, and then, doorways that lead into the kitchen and food serving lines, and then, this window back here is ware-wash return for dish return. And then, we have the operable partition, which is shown in an open condition, and that would allow the space to be opened up to the gymnasium for bigger community events or fairs or things.
How many does the cafeteria or whatever hold?
The dining commons itself, if you're doing it just for lunch, it holds a little over two-hundred people. If you were doing it for performance seating...
It was three-forty-something.
Yeah, I think that was correct. If you had just seating in there, it was about three-forty, three-fifty, in that range, basically, three-forty-three if I recall correctly.
With just chairs?
Just chairs, yeah.
If you ended up with the tables, like, at New Middletown?
Okay.
Where the bench flips?
Yes.
That's the use?
Yes, I think I know what you're talking about, yeah.
Does that add more seating?
Well, it very well may, but we'd have to do a layout and then check the capacity of that, but it possibly could. There is a lot of variety, depending on the actual furniture style you choose, so... So, again, this is the gymnasium space, backboards, volleyball courts, bleacher seating, that is an alternate, seating for a hundred and fifty approximately on the bleachers there. And then, you know, the doorway here leads to PE storage and the PE instructor's office. And then, the doorway here leads back to the mechanical spaces and kitchen and things like that.
If you, can you show us inside the gym where the public would enter if they weren't coming through the...
Yeah, so, the normal route that the public would take, if they come in through the main entry...
Right, or that back entry, right?
Uh, yes, correct, but I'll just start at that point, Sher, we'll just go right out there. So, you'd be coming in at either, you know, one of these doors. This is the back door, this is the front door.
Oh, okay.
You come into this vestibule area here, walk through this door, which is normally going to be open.
Right.
And then, you're into this lobby, but before you walk into the dining commons, there's a set of doors right here that would take you right into the gymnasium. That would take you right into the gymnasium.
So that dining, dining area, is there a gate or a?
There is not a block or a gate or a doorway that separates this corridor from that dining commons area. And so, yeah, the access is, you really just come in to the gym through here, but you're still open into this dining commons. We don't have a blockade or a divider between those two areas. And in general, this is a high-use corridor because the students are going to be going to that dining commons and to the kitchen area frequently, so.
Well, I'm thinking like, just take an old building right now, today, that most of us have been in, Chardon High School's kind of like that, that cafeteria is right to the gym. And it leans itself to a lot of people gathering there instead of there. Just saying. And we can always bridge that too if we had to.
So that is kind of a quick walkthrough. I hope that's been informative.
That's been great.
And if there's any other questions?
I just have one other. What I saw is pretty much what we've been envisioning. The corridors look small to me.
Okay.
Can you elaborate maybe on the width of them? Like, for example, I'll give you one thing that I was looking at. The steps are the steps right in the main hall there?
Yes.
But to the side of it is where the majority of the people are going to be going, my suspicions are, to get to the different.
Yeah, and I apologize because I won't have exact dimensions for you here, but I'm going to give you a rough idea.
I mean, it's not full foot, is it?
No, no, and that's, that's.
That's what it looks like.
That's the key, yeah. That stairwell is probably in the neighborhood of about five feet, eight inches to six feet wide.
Okay.
Right there. And, and this corridor, again, I don't have exact, but you're probably looking in the neighborhood of seven, seven to eight feet wide just in the corridor area here.
Because I'm thinking the little kids passing each other and, you know, once you turn the corner, it's basically the same?
It really does. It really, you hold that eight foot roughly as we tend to go down through these corridor areas of the building. And then it widens out, you know, here where we have.
Yeah, outside the.
The, the activity areas where students are going to be going in and out of doorways and things like that.
So it's really, really nice.
Thank you.
I like the fact that while the exterior looks very traditional, the interior does not. And as I haven't been part of the design process at all, I'm, I'm just really excited to see that it's, it is.
Wait till you see the colors.
It truly is like what we have envisioned, like from the very beginning.
Colors were a little sudden, I mean.
Right.
Yeah. So it's been a fun process, working with the district and Melissa has been an enormous help all throughout this process and especially in pulling all the staff meetings together and working with us as well, so. If there's anything else, I'm glad to answer.
Where are the ice cream machines?
Uh, don't have those 220 lines.
Setting to, this, this facility's setting on 608. Which way would the doors be facing the main entrance?
So, uh, yeah.
Towards the roadway.
Let me back out of the building here a little bit. So 608 being Concord Hampton Road would be running, let me see if I can get this around the side there. We are, whoops.
Everything's happening.
We're sinking below the ground there. So really, the alignment is with 608 would be, you'd be looking more at this angle at the. And then once you come in the main driveway, which is right here, you'd be coming in that driveway leading up to the entry. So the view from Concord Hampton Road is primarily looking at this end of the academic wing. That's really mostly your, your view there.
Is there a way, just asking, when you say that, can we change, like this building, say this was the one that's going to Concord. See how you got the white accent there on those windows? Can we add that to the front? Right, keep going, right there.
Right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. We can certainly.
Just because that would be the road, the front of the road, you know what I mean?
Sure, yeah, gives a little character interest.
We don't need it, we don't need it over there, but we need it over there.
That, that's not a problem at all. We can certainly make that adjustment.
And do we intend to put the name of the school anywhere facing the road, like on this, under this building?
Well, at Concord Hampton, we actually, at Madison Avenue, we're going to have a monument sign that'll actually be out at the road. And we've talked about the potential of having an electronic reader board on that. That's one of the things that we have to work with, Painesville Township zoning off, that's an issue with them as far as getting that approved. At Concord, because of the road and the hills that are involved, it doesn't make sense to have a reader board there because you're never going to be on the road long enough to see it and read those announcements. So we don't have anything right now with the building lettering here. Right now, that building lettering is, is really back here, whoops, I've done it again.
Even like the address number.
Yeah, it, it is back here on this accent wall right here. Now, we can certainly add it if it's desired. We could add that right out here at the corner of the building too.
Yeah, I don't know about anybody else, but I think we're proud of these schools and gosh darn it, we went, I love to see our names so that people can see it.
Yeah, that, we can certainly add, we can either move that lettering out here or just add a second set of lettering.
I think I'd like to see it add a second set.
Okay, okay, we can do that. And we'll put some lettering on there and put it as a placeholder right now. And in the future, you know, I'm sure the board will be considering what they're going to be naming these facilities, so. All right.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Looks great.
That's very nice.
Love it.
All right.
Good job.
That takes us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. All right, because we have nothing for there, then we'll move us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove a consent agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually. Finance and audit.
Yeah, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit consent agendas recommended by the treasure items A through J.
You can second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to acknowledge the donations that we have. We've got a donation from the Lake County Educational Federal Credit Union for the veterans' monument display. From Michael and Cynthia Mahoney to Riverside Cares, Ohio Payroll Plus to Riverside Cares, and to the David R. Baker Scholarship Fund, we got a donation from Dog Tag Brewing Foundation. So thank you very much to all of them for their donations.
All right. If there's no other discussion, can we call the roll?
Blenda Grassy?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Blenda Grassy?
Aye.
I'll make a special mention for the two teachers that appear on the retirement of a proportion of the agenda. Gene Jones has been with us for a very long time. Marlene Higgs started, maybe about 10 years ago or so. 15 now? That long, wow.
Yeah, Mike is here or so.
Stepping into another phase of their life in retirement, we'd like to congratulate.
Mayor Johnson's last one.
Great, come on, ask him. Okay, that takes us to buildings and grounds.
So, the Building and Grounds would have the organizational meeting?
Right, we have the organizational meeting and the permanent easement for the sanitary storage.
Okay. So I'm sorry, where's the?
Number 12.
No, I'm, they're, the verbiage to, basically, we have to force the Building and Grounds portion of the agenda to approve items A and B?
Yes, on part C, this is the way the board does.
Okay. Motion to approve the items listed on the Building and Grounds consent agenda is recommended by the superintendent. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I would like to take number B off out of the consent agenda and put it as a separate item.
Put it separately?
Yes.
I'll second that.
We already had a discussion on that. I just have concerns regarding this with the property and making sure that the future boards, as Mr. Heck has stated, that if we did go along with this, how would it affect it? So I would like for this to be put separate.
Okay.
Do we want to table it then?
Are we looking to table it or are we looking to?
Or we could table it.
Until you give me more information regularly.
It'd be easier for us to table it and give more information as opposed to if we end up not voting for it and then.
That's fine.
First, that would be.
Okay.
So we remove item B, permanent easement.
Do we have to vote on it?
Yeah. Jeffries, you did a motion for that, to take that off?
Yes.
I'll second.
Second. Okay, can I get a real call on that? We'll go, Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Blenda Grassy?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
And Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, so.
So now we're just voting on?
A, A and C, correct?
Item A, yeah, just side technicality.
Okay. So now we're just on item A. Is there any discussion on item A?
Go ahead and we'll remotion for Mr. Heck and then we'll need a second.
Awesome.
Okay.
Okay, Grassy will second. Any additional discussion on the potential meeting?
Can you call the roll, please?
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Blenda Grassy?
Aye.
And Tom Heck?
Aye.
And Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, so.
So now we're just voting on?
A, A and C, correct?
Item A, yeah, just side technicality.
Okay. So now we're just on item A. Is there any discussion on item A?
Go ahead and we'll remotion for Mr. Heck and then we'll need a second.
Awesome.
Okay.
Okay, Grassy will second. Any additional discussion on the potential meeting?
All right. Can you call the roll, please?
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Blenda Grassy?
Aye.
And Tom Heck?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I wonder if it'd be helpful if we got somebody here from the sewer district to explain it a little bit better than when we looked at the receipt. Mr. Rothlisberger or Mr. Yurkovich, right?
Right, right. Mr. Moore was the individual we dealt with. Maybe have him or he'll at least come out for the next meeting and we can have a short business item on there if we choose to do so.
All right, with that, just again in closing, we're in our budget meeting and organizational meeting that will be on January 8th at 6:45. And 7:00 PM. Do we have any Board of Education update items that anyone else wants to add?
So actually, I just have one thing. I, it was in the Friday packet as well as my daughter talked about it, but on Saturday, we have the Halls of Ivy, which is the first event of its kind that I'm aware of, but I think it's going to be very exciting. I don't have all the details. I don't know if you would be able to add any more, but basically it's, it's open to the community. Each, the first floor is going to be decorated in, in holiday theme and Polar Express will be playing in the auditorium and.
Activities for.
Activities in the classroom. So I really think it's a terrific event. And as I understand it, it was actually the brainchild of the president of the student council. And so my Mac lays to her to, for that great idea and to the staff and everybody else for letting it proceed. So I think it's going to be a really great event.
Nice. All right. All right, with that, then I will make a motion to adjourn at 8:25 PM. Mr. Michael Caldwell, please.